Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I wanted to call the special meeting of the Harbor Advisory Board to order here. As I look around, we do have a quorum. The only one that's missing is Neil Maloney. Everyone else is present. And at this time, I'd like to offer a moment of silence and then say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Everyone stand.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America to the Republic, which stands for one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, and as I say, this meeting has one topic on the agenda, and only one topic, and that is the Morro Bay Boat Yard and Hallout Facility market demand analysis that was conducted by Henry's firm, Lisa Weis Consulting. And so right now, without any ado, I'd like to invite Henry up, and he can go through his presentation, so, and then afterwards what we'll do is ask the public to have any comments. This is not a question and answer. Henry doesn't work for the city, so, but it's all recorded. And then, we're going to go to the board here, and we're going to have some comments of our own, and then we'll open it up again. So hopefully, a lot of your questions, and how we're going to proceed afterwards, will be answered as we move forward here. So, Henry?
Thank you. On behalf of our team, I'd like to thank the city and the Harbor Advisory Board for the opportunity to present our findings and our work on the Morro Bay Boat Yard Hallout and Facility demand analysis. Like, my name is Henry. I'm one of the owners and co-founders of Lisa Weis Consulting. We're a land use planning and economics firm. We're based in San Luis Obispo. We look at this as a really important project for us. An individual project, but certainly part of a work that we've been doing here since 2007, since a business plan, a comprehensive business plan that we did in the commercial fishing industry in 2007, and a part of the similar work that we've done up and down the coast, from San Diego to Eureka and Fort Bragg. So, really pleased to be here tonight and present, to present on this project. The project was made possible through the management, the very insightful management and funding from the city of Morro Bay, as well as the Morro Bay Commercial Fishermen's Organization with continued support from the Central Coast Joint Cable Fisheries Liaison Committee, and big, big thanks to them for their ongoing support for the work here in the harbor. There was also strong support from the recreational boating community and Morro Bay Yacht Club, as you can see here. That, I think that was a really important part of making this, this project a reality, as well as support from the environmental community, particularly the National Estuary Program. So, the aim of the, the project has, has been, or is, to provide another piece of data for decision-makers in, in the city, and for the boat, vessel-owning community, to understand better what the potential demand might be for a boatyard and hallout facility in Morro Bay, and just to give, to give more insight on the community's understanding and perspective on, on these needs. So, you know, project goals are to assist local, assess local market demand, understand the regional industry, assure the community drove the process, and that their voice was evident in the, in the findings and the, and the final recommendations, and for, for us as a team to offer, offer recommendations on, on next steps. So, the background of the project, you know, certain, this is not a new concept. In 1997, the city appointed a four-member board for a Boating Access and Facilities Committee, and funded several engineering and market and design studies through the years, as well as making efforts at acquiring a, a property in 2006. So, this is an, this is an ongoing need that the community has identified. We've also, more recently, in April of 2014, the city council unanimously approved the Community Sustainability Plan, which was a comprehensive assessment of the commercial fishing industry, and also looked at the commercial fishing in, in the context of the greater working waterfront in the community. The number, number-one priority in that, in that report of 11, the number-one was the need for a boatyard and, and hallout facility. That report was funded by the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, and the intent was to fulfill the requirements in the Magnus and Stevens Act. There's also very strong support from the, a broad range of users here, vessel owners of marine-dependent businesses. Fifty percent of the respondents to the survey were recreational vessel owners, the other 35 percent were commercial fishing vessel owners. And again, we had very strong support from the environmental community, who see a boatyard as a means to better prepare the community to react to leaking and derelict vessels and protect, protecting the fragile, fragile estuarian environment. So, our methodology to, to achieve these goals were, we worked very closely with the city and the, the NBCFO to vet the approach. The emphasis, again, was, you know, the way we look at this, where the, this is a community's report, we just helped author it. So, the intent was to really spend a lot of time and attention and resources, reaching in, reaching out to the community and getting their input. At the heart of the project was a written survey. The survey, we, there was a fine line between trying to gather too much information, gathering enough, and burdening your respondents with balancing a robust response rate. So, of the 450 vessels in, in Morro Bay, we got 110 responses, which we, we felt was a very strong response rate, and gave us a, a high confidence, confidence level and confidence intervals. The survey was distributed, was made available in hard copies at the National Estuary Program offices, at the harbor manager's office, at the State Park Marina. It was available online, on the website, the city's website, and we also included it, our city staff helped include the survey in the monthly invoices that were sent to mooring and slipholders. So, we had a strong distribution and a, and a strong response. And again, the, the intent of this is to give decision-makers here an idea, another piece of data on, on the community's perspective on the need, need for a boatyard and hallout facility. We also looked at market trends in the study area. Study area was loosely defined from San Francisco to Ventura, or more specifically from Moss Landing to Ventura. We looked at the number of boatyards there, the kind of travel lifts they had, and the kind of services they offered very briefly, and then we focused down on four case studies. And we chose these case studies, again, very close collaboration with the boat vessel-owning community. As it turns out, so Ventura, Santa Barbara, Port San Luis, and Moss Landing were the four boatyards that we focused on to conduct case studies. And it turns out 65 percent of the respondents used either one, one of those facilities. We did research, we visited all four facilities, we did internet research, phone, focusing on what their market was, what the, what type of market they, they addressed, their financing and ownership structure, their hoist type and capacity, and what their, what their service protocol was. And we, we had some, we had takeaways that, that were pertinent for, for Morro Bay in each of these instances. Again, 110 responses of 450, very, very robust response rate. Some of the questions we asked were, had to do with vessel characteristics, your behavior, haulout behavior, how much you spend, what type of work you do yourself, where do you hire out a technician? So, we, we found that a typical haulout was, consisted of bottom wash, paint, replace zincs, and 100 respondents of the 110 claimed to, to haul their boats out every three years. A major haulout, obvious vessel owners undertake more complicated work, having to do with a driveshaft, rudder, keel, or cooling system, and 48 respondents of the 110 undertake this kind of work every four years. So, you know, jumping right to the, jumping right to the meat, the typical haulout, over 60 percent of the respondents claim that they'd spend between 1,000 and 5,000, 14 percent between 5,000 and 10,000, and almost 6 percent claim that they spent over 10,000 on, on a haulout. And major haulouts were more expensive, there was more, higher spending. So, with this data extrapolating or using statistical methods going from 110 to 450, we estimate there would be between 1.1 million and 2.3 or 2.4 million in potential earnings for a boatyard on an annual basis, based on, based on the input that we got from the surveys. Top motivations for why vessel owners, local vessel owners choose the, the facility they go to, number one was, it's close and convenient, number two is they can wait, work on the boat themselves, and number three was expert staff. Actually, price was down in four, four and five. So, our key findings were, you know, the first two are closely related. Timing is, is really, really critical, and I think, you know, the diner, the, the closing of the Dinerji plant certainly is important, but there seems to be a really strong nexus of, of the commercial and recreational environmental community coming together and, and stating that they, they would like the community to, to make the next step. The competitive climate, you know, we're finding that, based on the responses that we're getting, even if it has to do with proximity, that the, the regional facilities are not meeting the needs of Morro Bay vessel owners. And also, you know, again, to reiterate, we estimated that there would be approximately a traffic of 269 vessels a year, and an average of 1.7 million dollars, based on the responses that we got from the surveys. So, our recommendations, you know, recommendations were based on the, obviously, on the case studies, on the extensive interviews that we've conducted with, with commercial fishermen and recreational fishermen, our, our, our work here in Morro Bay, our ongoing work here in Morro Bay, and the input, you know, the very directed input from the, from the surveys. And the, the recommendations are meant to be more prescriptive, and then more informative than prescriptive. We're asking decision-makers to consider the next steps. Those would be, so phase two in the project, this would be considered phase one, the market demand analysis. Phase two would, would include preferred site analysis, financial feasibility, ownership's, potential ownership structures, and maybe a more detailed look at, at funding options. We offered 16 potential funding options, grant, grants and low-cost loans. We might take some of that to the next step, and I think the report would put the community in a really good position for attracting interest from potential funding sources. Public-private partnerships, you know, we found in, in our case studies that those successful boatyards had engaged in, in partnerships with the jurisdiction, partnerships with both state and federal agencies for funding and, and support. The, the subject of Port San Luis and the boatyard in Port San Luis, our recommendations consider this, approaching this in a, with a perspective of a cluster where the sharing of resources can take place, whether they be human resources, or technology, mobile boatwash, or bead blast, that's hauled behind a truck, where one facility is stronger having this, this partnership than they would be alone, and working very closely with, with our brothers and sisters in Port San Luis, keeping them informed of what we're doing here in, in Morro Bay. Some other various recommendations included, you know, a gantry crane for smaller vessels, so the travel lift did not have to be used for a smaller vessel, dry storage, including a chandary as part of, of the facility. We've got, we've got a chandary here, that's been expanding, Jerry's, and, yeah, that's a conclusion of some of our, or a summary of some of our recommendations, and, you know, we, what we hope to gain out of this with our partners, with the NBCFO and the city, tonight, is to get the Harbor Advisory Board's either approval or acceptance of this report. If, if, if we find that there are additional changes that need to be made, if we can get the acceptance or approval with the stipulation, or the caveat that those changes be made, we'd be more than happy to move forward and work with the city, continue working with the city and the CFO to effect those changes. And that's all I have right now.
Henry, this particular 46-page, I believe, report that you generated based on your case studies and stuff, is this, can we view this to public right now, and where do they view it?
Good question. Cool. So, to date, it's, it's an internal document. It's been reviewed certainly by the project manager, the city, NBCFO. The ad hoc committee has had a chance to review it, and I, and I think once we get the thumbs up from the Harbor Advisory Board, we can turn it into a public review draft, and that would, you know, we, that's a suggestion I would make, that, you know, Eric, I think would be the ultimate determinator on that one.
So, as we proceed tonight, and this could be put on the city's website, if we so choose to have that done. Is that correct, Eric?
Yeah, sort of. I'll, and I'll correct Henry a little bit. So, consideration of this document tonight by the Harbor Advisory Board in a public meeting obviously means that the Harbor Advisory Board has to have it in their hands to review it. It's already on the website. It's already on the staff report that we've got presented here tonight, so it's been there since last week. So, what we're looking for, like, like Henry said, is, you know, public input to this as well, as well as Harbor Advisory Board discussion. So, it's already out there.
Thank you. All right, Henry.
That it?
I think what I'd like to do now is open it up for public discussion. We have a time, public comment, I'm sorry. And you do have three minutes, Eric. I, you know, so if you could stand up. Thank you, Henry.
Cool, man. Thank you.
So, would anyone like to come up and have a public comment? Jim? You state your name, and thank you.
Good evening, and my name is Jim Phillips. I'm a resident of Morro Bay, and I'm here to speak in favor of a boatyard, and from the perspective of a recreational boater. First of all, I've dabbled in recreational boating for about 35 years, from a trailerable boat to a 34-foot trawler, and I've noted that in the early years, there were many more services available for, for both types of boats in Morro Bay, and over the years, they've diminished or gone out of existence altogether, making it hard on recreational boaters to get the, either the services they need, or the material that they need, or the work that they need done, or even have a place where that work could be done by themselves. A second point I want to make is partly having to do with my, being a member of the Morro Bay Yacht Club, and in that capacity, we have 220 memberships, the majority of which have boats of all sizes and types. And we also have a small storage yard, which is bursting at the seams at the, at the present time, and those, the boaters that are, are also members, of course, are only part of what I've seen as part of Morro Bay Yacht Club. The other part is the transient boats that come through our area on the way, going from Monterey to Ventura or the other direction. And I only know this statistic from the one year in which I was the port captain, but we were required for the Harvard, from, from the Harbor Department to keep control of this, or to keep accurate numbers. In the year I was the port captain, we had 300 vessels come through and stay on our dock. And I know from my activity with them during that year, that there were many, and I can't tell you how many, but there were many situations where they needed something, something that was, in some cases, difficult to get for them, where they had to order parts from out of town, for instance, or have mechanics come from Ventura up here to work on their boats, and that sort of thing. And I think that, that alone provides a service to recreational boaters that certainly would, would benefit Morro Bay and, and benefit the boating community if, if a boatyard, in the scale at which we've talked about it, is developed. So, that's about all I have to say, but thank you for the continued interest in, in a boatyard for Morro Bay.
Good evening. I'm Pandora Nash Carner. I live in Los Osos. I'm a member of the yacht club. I'd like to bring up something that I didn't see in the report, but first, I'd like to say thank you very much for doing the survey and for getting it out to as many people as you did. I was really pleased to have the opportunity to fill it out. But one of the things I didn't see a lot of information on is the fact that some of us have boats that we take to Ventura. My boat's very slow. It's a 24-hour haul under the best of conditions. That's a long way, obviously, some of it's at night. And I think I would haul out, and I can't be the only one, more often if it was here, as opposed to every three years going south. I was just talking to our current Commodore, John Bodine, and last year, we took the mast off my boat, and we had to do it with a haulout or with the hoist at the yacht club. There has to be a better way. The other thing that I wanted to mention is, it's known that Morro Bay does not have a boatyard, and when you think of all the transients who do stop here, think of all the ones who know they can't get help here and keep on going. So, we are the only port in the storm, and I think it's a logical place for people to be able to get help and expertise. Many people can do their own work, some of us can't, and it would be a wonderful opportunity not only to capture the local market, encourage the locals to perhaps haul out more often, but to also capture the transient market as it comes by. Also, if, it would be really helpful if we had a fuel dock that was really efficient. Thank you so much.
Okay. Peter? Please state your name.
My name is Peter Beeman. I'm in favor of a boatyard, and, but I have some points to make, and I've been a boat owner for probably 35-plus years also. I'm a member of the yacht club. And also, we're a business owner and property owner, and, and we're in the tourism business, we're in the hotel business, and so we, as, as a boat owner, first of all, I want to give you another example in terms of lost, lost opportunity, income opportunity. My boat was involved in an accident around the first of the year, some of you know about it, and incurred a substantial amount of damage. The boat is insured by Boat US, major insurance company. They were concerned about the ability of the boat being able to train, take the trip to Ventura, which was the closest available yard, and so they opted to tow the boat. And they towed the boat to Ventura at a cost of $9,000 with vessel assist, and it was paid for by the insurance company. That wouldn't have happened if there was a yard here. The work that had to be done on the boat amounted to, right in the area, of $27,000. And so, there's lost opportunity of, you know, maybe $40,000 worth of income. I think the, a yard here would be a tremendous asset, and I, I can't emphasize, as been mentioned before, the potential of the transient boat population that travels up and down this coast most times of the year. And I also have been on the dock numerous times at the Morro Bay Yacht Club, where work hasn't been able to get done, or they've had to limp themselves down to Ventura to get work done. So, that's income and opportunity that's lost. In addition, we, we own a, a little hotel that is located almost across the street from where the, one of the proposed areas for the haulout would be. And so, in that regard, it's the bayfront end, and there's also Frankie Lolo's Restaurant there. And so, in that regard, tourism is the top income generator for this town, bar, bar none. So, that, we have, I have some concern about noise, you know, the beep, 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 when the travel lift is backing up and this sort of thing, and I have concern about what's going to happen with traffic and parking. And I know what a, I know what the bottom of the boat smells like when you wash the bottom and all the debris and all the growth, and it sits there, and it's, it's not very fragrant. So, ways of being able to deal with those things, I think, are important considerations. On the other hand, it's, for people who aren't, oh, for people who aren't used to seeing boats being hauled out, it's a bit of entertainment. And so, anyway, I encourage you. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sue Straven. I'm a chandler at Rock Harbor Marine Supply in Los Osos, and along with Jerry's Marine, I think we're about the only game in the area. I echo the words of Jim, and Pandora, and Peter. I am a sailor on Pandora's boat. I feel that the need, from what I heard recently at the Pacific Strictly Sail Show, is that we seriously need better facilities here in Morro Bay. Many of the people from the Bay Area who I spoke with told me that they feel a little bit of consternation when they get down this far and have a problem, and know that their only resolve is to try to push through to Ventura, or to be stuck here laid up, and travel back up to the coast, up the coast to San Francisco, or down to Ventura to get parts, mechanics, and the help that they need. So, I would like the continued consideration of this proposal, and thank you all for all of the work that you're doing.
Good evening, board members. My name's Mike Multari, and I'm filling in for Adrian Harris, who's the program director for the MBNEP, and who, as some of you know, is out on maternity leave, and she has a new son, and everybody's doing fine. The program appreciates the opportunity to have him been on the advisory committee, and the National Estuary Program has long supported a haulout here in Morro Bay. We believe that the general conclusions of the report make sense, that a wholly private operation probably is not feasible, but that there are public benefits that would likely accrue from such a facility that warrant a public-private partnership, and that further study that would inform what that partnership might entail seems like a good idea. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Jerry Luer. I also serve on the Planning Commission, and one of the points that I'd like to bring up here is that we're
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jerry Luer. I also serve on the planning commission, and one of the points that I'd like to bring up here is that we're in the process of starting a review of the LCP and the general plan. And this would be an optimum time to put a proposal in, so that, so that that proposal could be included in the review of, and the renewal of the LCP and the general plan. So, I think this is the time to go, to go for it. Also, I'd like to also bring up a point where I'm familiar with the, the facilities at Port Townsend, Washington. This is a community that has been largely built around the haulout facilities and the maritime, maritime industries in Port Townsend, Washington. There's about 8,000, 10,000 people living there. They just completed, I think about a year ago, they just completed a 10 million dollar building for the Wooden Boat Society. And every year, they have a, they have a Wooden Boat Festival that draws 30,000 to 40,000 people. So, talk, you know, talk about, you know, being able to bring income into a community. This haulout facility would help if it's laid out to, to where it's viable, and we would have tourists coming to that, both, both transient boats, and I think there would be a large selection of boats that would like to haul out here as transients. So, I think the, the opportunity is even better than what is stated in, in the material I've seen. So, I would encourage having the haulout facility here and pushing, pushing to get this, this project underway. Thank you.
I am, can you hear me? I'm Todd Hanson. I am the vice commodore this year of the Morro Bay Yacht Club, and I'm here representing the club. We had a board meeting last night, and it was unanimous that they said, go down there and let them know that we wholeheartedly support a haulout facility. I think Peter and some of theirs have already touched on some of the reasons. I know boats that get trapped here coming through, or even members have boats that need work done, and they can't because they're not, they don't have Peter's insurance coverage. They can't afford to get themselves towed down to Ventura, and they're stuck here. So, again, wanted to reiterate our support for a haulout facility.
Hello, my name's Stanley Craig. I was fortunate enough to be born and raised in Morro Bay, and I distinctly remember the boatyard, was it by Bob's or by the Otter Rock, when it was in service back then? I remember being fascinated by it. As a real estate broker, I think tourists come here, they fall in love with Morro Bay, I can give them my business cards, and that's business for me. So, I think it's a win-win for everybody involved. Thank you.
My name's Andy Killian, and I operated Anchors Way Marine Centers down in Ventura and Channel Islands for eight years, a boatyard management company. I was invited by Bob Fowler to come up and listen in on the meeting. I'm really excited about what you're doing. I don't operate a boatyard right now, but I'm willing to offer my input, if you need it, as this process goes on. I have a keen awareness of costs and process, and how to manage the facility. One thing, I think that the report was really good. It was, I think, a little optimistic on the annual turnover. It didn't really touch on the other thing, like in the middle of the night, how's a boat, if it's sinking, where does it go? It's an environmental deal. I know some, there was some talk about environmental, but that's a huge issue, if a boat's sinking in the middle of the night. Also, there's a big opportunity for storage, for boat storage. So, instead of being on cans out in the harbor, or in slips, you can store a lot of boats, or you can bring boats from inland that want to be closer to the waterfront, which is revenue for the city. So, I just wanted to offer my expertise, and that's it.
Thank you. Could you state your name again, sir?
Yeah. My name's Andy Killian. I reside in Ventura. And I've hauled a lot of boats from Morro Bay.
Thank you.
My name is John Bodine. I'm commodore this year of the Morro Bay Yacht Club, also a 100-ton licensed skipper. I don't want to be redundant with everyone else, but a good example, recently, I delivered a boat from Long Beach. Now, the owner lives in San Luis Obispo. He'd love to have his boat, his 48-foot sailboat in Morro Bay, but I couldn't recommend that because of the maintenance problems. I highly recommended Ventura. Everything's real accessible, there's plenty of workforce down there, he can take care of the boat, and he may, he probably will bring it to Morro Bay at some point, but it sure would encourage him to do that if the maintenance facilities here were more feasible for him. And along with that fact, a lot of people, I think, are in that same mindset. There's a lot of money that goes on to businesses out of the area here because of that. A lot of the money could come right into the local community in the form of hotel rooms, rental cars, all sorts of things that take place out of the area now, but would come into the area and benefit all the businesses in the community. Thank you.
Do we have any more public comment?
My name is Wayne Moody. I'm a commercial fisherman, 40-plus years, and I've hauled out, I used to haul out in Port San Luis. I actually had a mooring down there. And anyway, I've hauled out Monterey, Moss Landing, Santa Cruz, Reed's Port, Oregon, up in, our boat was built in Port Townsend, we used the ways there years and years ago. Hauled out in Iwaka, Washington. All my money goes other places when I have to haul out. Takes me, generally, the last, probably 15 years, I've been going up into the Monterey Bay to haul out, probably burned 75 to 100 gallons of fuel, one-way trip up, one-way back. That's just dead time for me, lost money. Anyway, and, and I know that there's been a lot of talk about how the, the haulout yard in Port San, Port San Luis is getting better. I'd like to, I'd like to let you know what my last haulout was, probably about 10 years ago there. When I went to haul out, it was a perfect day, just flat calm. I got out, great. Then when I got ready to go back in, the swell was up, I had to wait and wait and wait. And they have a problem with shoaling, as everybody knows, there, the sand's built up real bad there. And so, they bring the LCM in, they blow it out, and then you can go in the water. Well, that was fine for me, until I got about halfway out of the, of the hoist area there, and I went aground. There I was, aground, you know? So, I put it in, put it in gear and just cranked on as hard as I could, and luckily, there wasn't any swell. I couldn't get off. Luckily, the, the, the water taxi came over and started pulling me side to side, and I wiggled back and forth and got out. Now, if there'd been a swell there, I would have done a lot of damage, because my boat's deep, it's deeper in the stern, and who knows, maybe my rudder would've been inside the boat instead of where it's supposed to be. Anyway, we've got, I'm in, I'm in a, an insurance pool. We require everybody to haul out every two years. I generally haul out every year. Probably in the 40-plus years we've owned the boat, we've probably hauled out 38 of those years. And those times when we didn't haul out, it was just because it wasn't convenient. So, I think, like the lady said earlier in one of the comments, that if we had a haulout yard here, there'd be a lot more people who would haul out on a more regular basis. Maintenance of a boat is really important. Looking at a diver, I'm a diver, and you can't see some of the problems that might develop, you know, but a diver. So, I encourage you to continue on, and probably won't get built while I'm a boater, but this, this, this town needs one. Thank you.
My name's Jeremiah O'Brien, and obviously, a little late, but I came in just in time for a public comment, and I reiterate everything that Wayne just said, and I belong to the same insurance pools, the United Reserve Fund and the United Trollers Fund. My two years, I did not haul last year. I had some medical issues to deal with. I am required to haul this year, and I'll be going up to Moss Landing to do so. I've been hauling at Moss Landing primarily for near, about the last 20 years. I've also hauled in Iwaka, Washington. But in any case, I think this would be a benefit, a benefit to Morro Bay, a benefit to the community, the boating community, and the fishing community, and the city at large. That's about it. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Lori French. I'm representing the French family, and I want to apologize, I just got out of the pool, that's why my hair looks this way. Now that we've covered bad hair. We have two boats, and we're in the same insurance pool. So, one of our boats is out of the water every year. We've been either going to Moss Landing or to Richmond. Occasionally, we can get out at Port San Luis, but there's, there are issues there. Moss Landing, it's doable. Richmond, I prefer they didn't go there, because when they haul out there, the guys stay on the boat. They have to lift the ladder up while Richmond lets the dogs out at night. It's not in a savory neighborhood. They hear gunshots on a frequent basis. And I prefer my husband doesn't do business in an area like that. I'd rather have him home. So, thank you.
My name's Tony Gomez, from San Luis Obispo. I've been a recreational boat owner for 15 years in Morro Bay, and I haul out in Morro Bay, which isn't an issue, but I've spent probably, on my three boats, $60,000 in the last 15 years up in the Bay Area in Alameda. I buy a boat, I would spend $10,000 to $15,000 refitting, fixing whatever needed to be done in Alameda, because there was no facility here in Morro Bay. My second boat, the same thing. I just brought my third boat from San Francisco. I've spent about $20,000 refurbishing and fixing that boat that didn't come to Morro Bay, because we didn't have the facility to pull the boat, number one, and we didn't have any infrastructure in case you needed some expertise. So, I really support a haulout facility and a boatyard, especially with my boat, because I can't pull it out here. Thank you.
My name's Ellery Straven. Worked for the city of Morro Bay as a professional lifeguard, and also for the county. I spend quite a bit of time at the Morro Bay Yacht Club and crew on Pandora's boat, been on other boats, and I definitely think that it'd be a great idea to have a haulout. In the future, I would like to own my own boat, and just the idea of having to buy a boat elsewhere, or buy a boat here and have to take it elsewhere to get it checked out, seems like a deterrent. And so, I think that if we had a haulout here, then it would be that much, I don't know, I would be more willing to buy a boat earlier in my life and invest more money here in the community. Thank you.
So, is there any other comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, I think I want to bring this topic back to the board and have them comment on the next step here. And I will start down at Gene's end. Gene?
Yes, I'm all in favor of the boatyard, have been in for, in favor of it for 20 or 30 years. Couple revisions on the, on the report. On page 18, you mentioned that the Morro Bay boatyard is limited to 30-foot boat, correction would be 40-foot boat and 20 tons. And I'd also like to see haulout facility, being able to haul out catamarans or tramarans that are at least 22, 23 feet wide. Those are my corrections.
Alan?
I was happy with the report. I thought it had a lot of information that I had never seen before, and I do want to remind everybody that the report was a demand analysis, and revenue figures are premature at this point. And I think the money that they're talking about in there that, that would be spent is, would be spending in Morro Bay, but I don't think it's going to directly be revenue that's going to come as a result of owning, of operating the boatyard to the city. So, I just wanted to make that clear.
Wayne?
It seems from what we've heard from the public, that perhaps the demand would be a little bit greater than is represented in the report. It's kind of hard to bank on that, but it certainly is nice to hear that, and I am among those who have to go down to Ventura or Santa Barbara for a haulout, and I thus postpone it and only go every three years, instead of every year to two years that I would, if I could do it here. So, there's higher demand than perhaps is represented.
Okay, Ron? Ron?
My comments incorporate some questions for the consultant. Is that okay with you? Okay. So, before Henry comes up, in the summary of findings section, I mean, entitled "local demand," on page three, the analysis states that based upon the particular survey instrument used in this particular market demand analysis, 110 vessel owners in Morro Bay of 450 vessels moored and berthed on the waters of Morro Bay, quote, spend between 1.1 million and 2.3 million annually to haul their boat out of the water and conduct typical or major haulouts. And typical or major was, was defined by the consultant in the report. That's a pivotal assertion of the analysis work product, and it drives the analysis conclusions in terms of projected annual spending by Morro Bay resident boats in a local boatyard and haulout facility. Additionally, under, quote, "survey response summary," end quote, on page four, the analysis states, quote, "110 completed surveys yield over a 20% response rate. While 13 of the 110 respondents were non-local vessel owners, such a robust, such a robust response rate enables assumptions to be made on the boatyard and haulout use patterns of the local community and the potential demand for a facility in Morro Bay," end So, the, the analysis assertion regarding annual spending, as well as the analysis dependence on the conducted survey, leads me to some questions. And Henry, if I could trouble you to, to approach the podium, probably be easier for folks to hear whatever you might have to say. Thank you. So, I have, I have a few questions. According to the Morro Bay Department, Harbor Department count, pleasure powerboats constitute approximately 29% of all pleasure boats moored or berthed in Morro Bay. In the Lisa Wise Consulting analysis, only 7% of pleasure powerboat respondents, there were only 7% of powerboat respondents in the survey. Does this statistical difference affect any of the analysis conclusions?
Could you, thank you, could you repeat that?
Sure. According to the Harbor Department, 29% of all pleasure boats are powerboats moored in Morro Bay. 29% of all pleasure are power. The analysis includes- The analysis includes data relative to the survey that was conducted, which is the foundation of the analysis, includes only 7% of pleasure powerboat respondents. So it would appear as if we're short some pleasure boat, sorry, some power pleasure boat input. And does that have any material impact on the analysis conclusions?
Yeah, so the assertion is that we, for that striation or that component of the population, we may not have a sufficient response rate. Is that...
Well, it's a question, not an assertion.
Correct. Yeah, you know, I, I think based on the bounds of the, of the project, our, our attempt was to kind of stay up in the upper level of the trees and to provide data to decision-makers, not on which to decide whether there should be a boatyard or not, or, but on whether we should take the next steps in assessing a boatyard and maybe go into more detailed analysis on one issue or another in the project. I think that it's an astute observation, and I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that it would affect our, our outcomes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I, I got another one. According to the Morro Bay Harbor Department count, commercial fishing vessels constitute approximately 29% of all vessels moored in Morro Bay. 29% of the 450. The analysis includes 52.3%, according to your published data, commercial fishing vessel respondents to the survey, which would appear to potentially skew the survey results and the financial projections toward commercial fishing vessels. If that's the case, the reason that's significant is because commercial fishing vessels as working vessels likely spend more on both, quote, "typical," end quote, and, quote, "major," end quote, haul-outs in a given period of time than pleasure boats of the size and type moored and berthed in Morro Bay. So, does that data have any particular impact on the survey, on the study conclusions?
Yeah, I thought the recreational, 53% is, is, operates sailboats. 33% are commercial fishing vessels. Page five, under vessel class.
Are you talking about, of the respondents?
Yes, respondents, yeah.
Okay, point taken. I'd be more than happy to revisit the data. On page seven, thanks for your patience, on page seven of the analysis, the frequency of haul-out is referred to by 48 of the surveyed respondents as occurring four-plus years, every four-plus years. While on page 50 of the analysis, in Appendix E, 29 survey respondents are identified as conducting a, quote, "major," unquote, haul-out every year. So if 29 respondents conduct a major haul-out every year, which, well, I have my doubts about that as a marine surveyor, but that's neither here nor there because that's what they said. And 48 haul-out every four-plus years, what does that mean for the remaining 33 respondents in terms of a major haul-out? Which is a financially significant event in the, in the analysis.
Yeah, so, cool, thank you. What we did was, and I've, I've got some of our team, one of our team members here, who I may call on to help me answer some of these questions, we looked at a five- or six-year period and tallied what the typical and haul-out rates were, and then summarized those. And, you know, the, this is what we, this is what we came out with. And how, yeah. So we had to, we had to push the, the study period over five or six years to capture what a, what a typical and a major haul-out was, and then kind of summarize those down to what it would mean in a yearly basis.
Is the, if I say extrapolation, is that...
Extrapolation would seem appropriate.
Okay, thanks. I'm just about done. There appears to be a relatively significant contradiction between the reported boatyard spending of the 110 survey respondents, as summarized on page six of the analysis, and the reported 55.7, who on page six are reported as saying, quote, "they typically do their own work," end quote. Is there some way to reconcile that apparent contradiction?
Yeah, that, good, good comment. So even the, those that say they do their own work, they do hire contractors for technical work, electrical welding, welding and fabrication. So I guess a more accurate statement would be of the respondents that do tip, work that could be defined as typical, they do hire for such, such projects as, that would be engaged in a major haul-out or more technical work.
Okay, okay, thank you. And finally, I have a little bit of experience with market demand analysis. In my experience, they often or even typically include more than one set of forecasts, the factoring in adjustments for changing economic conditions and other factors of variance. This analysis contains a single forecast that's based upon a contemporary survey, so it's anchored in this time. Is there some reason that alternative forecasts are not included, factoring in potential causes for increased or decreased demand in the foreseeable future?
You know, we worked closely with the city and the CFO when we developed our scope of work, and I think we did even communicate with the Advisory Board when we put the scope of work together. And that's what we, based on our budget, timeline, scope of work, that's what we define. But that sounds, that's, it sounds like a good, a good approach, but with, we've fulfilled the bounds of the contract here with one, one method. And I think, you know, again, it's, we're providing this data for the decision-makers to consider it to move to, to the next steps. And if, and if the Harbor Advisory Board or the city would like us to revisit this in the next phase, to go back and provide a little bit more detail in the next phase or look at one or another item in the next phase, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Thank you for your time and your patience. Thank you.
Dana?
I just want to kind of bring everybody, give them some information. On the Harbor Advisory Board, we have an ad hoc committee specific to this subject right here, the facility, the marine facility with the haul-out, the boatyard, and the boat storage. So that's what we've been working on for the last three and a half years. It's, it's evolved with more participants. Ron, myself, Alan, and Jeremiah are, and then we have a representative from National Oceanic Program. And then we use Eric, also the Harbor Director, works with us on all of this. So we have taken this report, and we have twice have given it back with recommendations. So we've gone through this, and then we've come up with a report. And I don't know if you can find that, yeah, that should be online too, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So our comments are on this also, and some of these things that Ron was just talking about, we've gone through. For instance, the, the different types of work, somebody responding that they do their own work, but they also hire, well, we went over that. That's, that's typical, that, yeah, I did most of my work, but then I hired experts to do other parts of the work. So when we looked at this and went over it and went over it, we brought it down to somewhat more conservative from what we thought, some of us thought for sure. And having you guys come here tonight and give us feedback and support has been really, really helpful because we're finding out more from you guys. And this is what we're going to need from the rest of the time going forward, is your input and your support. When you're telling us, yeah, well, if I, if there was a haul-out here, I might buy a boat, or I would keep a boat here, or I'd haul out more often. Those are all, that's really good information for us when we're trying to put this together. So we hope that you continue to come and give us more ideas and that we'll just keep working on this. I don't know if we want to talk about our report at this time, or...
A couple comments that I have here. I had a chance to read this. I'm, you know, I think we've been talking about this since 1997. And I don't think that there, this is not a bad idea. This is an idea that needs to go further in the sense of, in the last 20 years, a lot of things, you know, out of sight, out of mind, as we've heard here tonight. We don't have a boat haul-out facility. We don't have a lot of things for boaters, so people don't even think about it. And they just, they deal with alternatives. So I think the next step that we, as a community, and we as Harvard Advisory Board, needs to really look at the site analysis, where we're going to put this, and figure that out so that we can figure out whether we can get some money, whether it would be private or public, to move this thing forward and push it forward. We can sit here and talk about this till we're blue in the face until we have specifics of how much is it going to cost us. And, you know, I, you know, I'm not a boater, but I look at this thing and I say to myself, why don't we build a, the, the, the facility, the boat haul-out facility first? We've got, you know, maybe some land right now that we can allocate to it, and maybe we look at the, the actual hoist and stuff like that later. I mean, it's just something that, you know, we start a small step. I'm a firm believer is that we should crawl before we walk and walk before we run. And I, I'm, we see the input tonight. We have a city representative here, Matt. We need to take some action as the Harbor Advisory Board, and we need to demand the city, and I mean that, demand, that we do something and we coordinate a master plan with the Maritime Museum. They're so for this. And you talk about a tourism draw, as people say here, this would be a tremendous tourism draw. Even, even, you know, whether or not be economically feasible, I think it can be, but we need to, we need to move this thing forward. That's my comment. Ron, I mean Dana, as whether or not we want to read the report that you have as the ad hoc committee, I don't know, or at least highlight it?
I would just ask that you check that out, too. If you have looked at the full report, hopefully you've looked at our comments on this. But at the, basically what we're looking at for our next step is, before it goes to a feasibility study, that we, we would hope that we, the ad hoc committee would continue to develop the criteria for that feasibility study. Because with you guys and ourselves, we know enough about what's here that we can start figuring out things, like you're talking about, location, the types of facilities. And I think what you were talking about just now with the, the storage yard, that's like mini-storage. You make money right off the bat. We'd have one piece of infrastructure to put in, and that would be a, a small hoist. And I'm, I've been to yacht clubs that have more facilities than our whole town does when it comes to this. You dry-sail your boats. They're sitting on the lot, you put them in the water, you go out for the day, you come back. You ever seen anybody try to do that? Down at the lawn tramp, takes them all day to rig. They're not going to just come, come and go. It just doesn't happen. And they have to wait for the tide, they got to have an extension on the tongue of the trailer. It, it doesn't work. But this could be an initial moneymaker to begin the project. I agree with that.
So where do we want to go here, folks? Do we want to make a recommendation? Would anyone like to? Well, first off, I'd like to open up to the public again. As you've heard from us, and does anyone else have any other public comment to make before we make a recommendation? Come on up to the podium.
Hello, Pandora Nash-Carner again. I wanted to mention that I may not be the only person in the world that does this, but when I take my boat down to have the bottom done, I discover, oh, I have to redo the plumbing. I hadn't counted on that. Oh, I also have to redo the electrical. Hadn't counted on that either. I'm already here, I might as well do it. If, if it was in Morro Bay, as I said earlier, we could do it more often. But what happens when you do a haul-out is you discover all kinds of other things you were either hoping weren't there or that you thought you could postpone for longer, and you end up spending far more money than you do, or that, than you had intended. The second thing is, one time I was in Ventura and I stayed two weeks, I had, I had to get a hotel. And I had to eat at the restaurants where I could walk to, from the boatyard as opposed to driving because I didn't have a car. So it's not just the boat parts that we're, we're paying for, but it's the restaurants, the services, the hotels, the infrastructure within the city that will all benefit. So I'm, I'm hoping with a, a local facility, we can all do a much better job in maintaining our boats without having to go far away and spend money elsewhere. Thank you.
Yes?
Sue Streben, Rock Harbor Marine, again. One of the things that I wanted to pass along is that in our marine supply business, we have people come over often from Port San Luis. And some of the comments that I hear are such as this. There's a storage yard up on the hill above the hoist, and many people have had their fishing boats stored there for quite some time. They live over in the valley. And my understanding is that they're asking them to move all of them, and they do not want to use that as storage any longer. Another comment that I heard was that it, it reiterates what was said about the shoaling and the issue of the hoist there and the way, the contour of the bay. There's a gentleman who's had his boat out for quite some time waiting for the concrete to harden so that the engineers can give a pass to get his boat back in. For the past two months, he's been out of business, and this is his high season for starting his recreational tourism business. So there are those who are local to our community from Port San Luis who could possibly benefit as well from a facility being here just around the corner from them. Thank you.
Hi, my name's John Mitchner. I'm a member of the yacht club. I was Commodore in 2010. And I just wanted to say that I'm very in favor of having the haul-out facility and boatyard. I have two boats in Morro Bay, and I, just with the facilities, I usually haul out here in Morro Bay, but with the facilities we have, there's, it's a quick in and out, and there's often, you don't get a chance to do all the things you need to do. And he's on an agenda or a schedule there. And it occurs to me also that, I think that Morro Bay has a real problem with derelict vessels. And I think that having a haul-out facility would help alleviate that problem, the visual pollution and the water pollution that comes from that. Because people have boats and they just can't work on them because they can't take it to Port San Luis, or they can't haul it out here in Morro Bay and have it worked on, you know, just in the, the two days or whatever, the work that needs to be done. So having a haul-out facility, I think, would help alleviate that problem because work could be done on all these boats that are just kind of falling apart in the bay. So, thank you. thank you.
Hi, I'm Tom Hafer, commercial fisherman here in Morro Bay. And I'm the president of the Morro Bay Fishing Organization. And I think Henry did a really good job on his report. And, you know, some of the numbers, you know, can be nitpicked all they want, but I just think we had kind of a timeline, and maybe the survey didn't get out to everyone. So we tried to get it done, and I think we, we got it done, and I think it's a good report. I'd just like to say that everybody here is for the boatyard. It's, we need a boatyard. It's necessity for Morro Bay, a safe boatyard. Avala, like Wayne was saying, you might get hauled out. It's bumper cars between the travel lift, and you don't know when you're going back in the water. You could be up for a couple of months if this swells up in the winter. I'd like to haul out once a year. I'd love to have my boat out of the water once a year, but I've got to run to Moss Landing or Monterey. And it would be just super convenient if it was here in Morro Bay. And, you know, the biggest funding, the biggest problem and the biggest hurdle is funding this thing. But if we just stay the course and go through the, all the phases that we plan to go through, and get it done, and then we could, you know, go to the state or federal people and ask for grants. If you have that information already and have a package, you could give this to them and go, "Hey, can we get a grant for this?" I mean, there's grants you can get anywhere. People love to fund a boatyard. So I just think, I really think we should just give this thing the okay, and stay the course, and get a site plan going, and figure out what we're going to do with this. And I really think we should go with a 100-ton travel lift to, like was mentioned about trimarans hauling out. You have to have a wide lift for a trimarand. There's a lot of money in that for yachts. You know, bigger boats. You don't make the ramps the travel lift goes out on to support a 100-ton travel lift. The bigger, the better, I say. In the ocean, you always got to go better than, bigger than smaller, it seems like, or things will break, or it's just the way it is, you know? All right, well, thanks.
Okay, Jim?
Jim Phillips, Morro Bay. I, as some of you know, I spent a few years on the Harvard Advisory Board, and I'm well aware that the idea of a boatyard and plans for a boatyard have been kind of a continuous phenomenon as far as the Harvard Advisory Board is concerned. And I've never doubted, for instance, the need for it. And I think the study presented tonight provided additional support for the need for a boatyard. I guess what I, and the last speaker mentioned funding, which is obviously important, too. But if we have the need and we have the funding and we have no place to put it, then we're still in a conundrum that's difficult to get around. And my question to you is, has a place been identified and a reasonable place and a possible place for this boatyard? Thank you.
Well, I think that there has been some sites. I was not involved with the ad-hoc committee. I can maybe let Jeremiah answer that. I mean, I have my ideas, but he's probably more of an expert.
Good evening again, Jeremiah O'Brien. That I believe is crucial at this stage of the game, is a site analysis. There has been a few sites mentioned and looked at and so forth. But as a community, working on a project like this, it's a big chunk. But as a community, we can do it. We've proven that in the past. A good example is the ICE machine, which was close to a million dollars. It was $907,000, to be exact. But we managed to accomplish that, all working together. And that's imperative. I think, right now, to continue on with this, the next step should be a site analysis. Because I do believe there is money out there available, but without a site, it would be folly to even apply for that money. I mean, no one's going to supply a dime without something concrete. You know, you've got to have a spot, a place to put it. So I thank Henry for, I think, an excellent job. The survey was comprehensive. As a matter of fact, all in all, it's very rare to get as many returns on a survey, or as large a percentage as he did get. I've been involved in many surveys in the past, and I think he'll get a very good response on it. So if we have a site, I believe then we can go forward with other details. And I think that should be the next step. Thanks very much.
Okay, any other public comment before we close it?
Good evening. My name is Brian Monroe. I wanted to bring some, a little highlight that Dana kind of alluded to here at the, and I've raised sailboats from Long Beach to San Francisco. And a lot of them, as he had mentioned, are dry-stored. And to provide a, as you're looking at space, obviously a lot of space for a big haul-out, you should consider, or try to consider some space for dry storage and a smaller opportunity for smaller boats to be able to get in and out of the water. Because I think it would bring a huge amount of revenue, like Dana said, instant income. I've raised in class races where they'd have, we could put together a regatta that would bring 30 boats here. And all of their crew, they'd stay in hotels, and they'd go out in the ocean, they'd race, and they'd come back. And that would be a huge, instant income. It's almost like the city infrastructure would, you know, would very much benefit from something like that. And some of the top classes, some of the hottest boats right now, they're bringing in, you could go to a regatta where they show up with 100 boats. And I think that would be huge for the city, and it would be instant income to be able to fund probably some of the bigger things needed, like a larger travel lift and everything else. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ken Twist, Morro Bay. I think you have a resounding, overwhelming support, probably for the last 20-plus years, for a haul-out. One thing, as we consider, or as the board considers, how you allocate space and site survey, we may want to consider how you monetize that. Because as you're looking to raise funds or flow bonds and try to raise money to get this off the ground, I'm interested to understand how much of that space could be potentially allocated for sportboat parking versus derelict, you know, kind of concerns me. If we get all the derelict boats up there, and we get a nice 70-ton vessel coming down from San Francisco that needs to be brought out, will we have space? So just kind of how you plan to utilize that space, I'm kind of keen, keen to understand as well. The numbers of the report, I'm not going to nitpick that, because you can, you know, futour your numbers long enough, they'll confess to anything. But I think that's a definite good first start as a report, and I look forward to the work you guys are doing. This is going to be great for Morro Bay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else that would like to speak, I would like to ask our harbor director, does he have any comments regarding this process? And any of your public comments?
Thank you for asking. So I'm going to back up a ways here, hopefully not too far. So we kind of all know, I mean, not just for the public and for the board here, but also for folks out in TV, landin' for the record. You know, we have been looking at this issue for going on 20-plus years. It's been off and on. We've had previous studies done. I think a lot of it depended on land acquisition back then. And the land acquisition that was envisioned pretty much disappeared with, for multiple reasons that we don't need to go into. And then the effort kind of died. I think Jim Phillips, when he was back on the advisory board, was, and even maybe before his tenure, we were considering this issue. So we've re-done some market analysis. I think, you know, what this market analysis is really trying to get at is defining what the potential demand, mostly local demand, the demand of what we're going to get from the outside is going to be hard to quantify. But getting at some degree of local demand, as Alan stated, you know, just because a person states they're going to spend $5,000 on a haul, doesn't necessarily mean it's all going to be spent at that yard. Folks are going to go to the hardware store, are going to do things online. But just to get an idea of what the local demand would be without nitpicking the numbers, to see if it's worth going to the next steps. I kind of foresee this as a sort of a go/no-go decision, whether or not to move forward. Obviously, if you've got a defined demand and that gives you a projected revenue stream, or projected possibility of a revenue stream, what that feeds into, or what needs to feed into that is, where does this yard go and at what cost? Obviously, if money were to fall from the sky and we had some great benefactor that came down with millions of dollars to build this thing, it'd be a going concern from day one because we wouldn't have any capital costs into it. But obviously, there's a large amount of capital input that needs to happen with this. And how much the boatyard can support versus the public possibly supporting it is yet to be seen. Site analysis, again, not knowing, not having an exact secured site. The earlier efforts at this yard were in the northern end of our waterfront, kind of focusing on the area north of the power plant intake. Now that Dynegy has got that on the market, we never were able to get any sort of progress on getting any negotiations from them to see if any of that other land might be available right across the street in that area. They do still have it on the market, but they're selling it as a whole. They're not interested in piecing it out. We did get that triangle lot property that, on the southwest corner of their property, near the front street parking lot. All those talks were occurring before Dynegy was really up for sale. So we do have that. The city, I think, has yet to really master-plan that. As one of our speakers said, the general plan, local coastal plan update's going to be an important element. I don't know exactly what the GPLCP speaks to in terms of a boatyard right now. Currently, I don't have it memorized, but, you know, it is obviously a coastal-dependent use, which is something which is in the existing GP and local coastal plan, and I would assume be something to be in the future plan. But it's an important consideration. So both, all these, you know, the market analysis versus a site feasibility kind of feed into each other in my mind. And what we're looking for is good public input. I think that we probably should have the ad-hoc committee report its findings, even though we've got it in a staff report. I think it's an important element, that that part to get discussed. Because the ad-hoc committee had a big part in this. They were convened for a reason, to get some expertise outside of the Harvard Advisory Board process, which is a public and often kind of slow and clunky process. And that committee did have input into the survey, did have input into the draft sections of the report as they were being developed, as did I, as did the Commercial Fishermen's Organization. So I think it's valuable that their input is, if nothing else, officially read into the, into the record, but at least brought out for Harvard Advisory Board consideration in light of all the comment we've heard here tonight. Next steps are going to be, what I'm hoping to, what we're all hoping to see out of this, is some sort of Harvard Advisory Board action. Maybe a recommendation of approval, as Henry said, or acceptance with caveats, with other things to consider. We heard a lot of public comment tonight, and I think some of your minds up there have been turning on some of these things that may be worthy of further mention. Next steps, as we said, it's, I sort of foresee this as a go/no-go decision, and should we potentially pursue next steps? We'll bring that to the city council and see where they want to take it in another public forum here into the future. And this is one component of a larger effort that's still going to take a lot of time and a lot of study to really identify how it's going to work. Because without the location, as our last couple of speakers said, you know, it's kind of like the Maritime Museum. They've got all kinds of great energy and things to do, but they don't have a museum yet. And it's hard to get good funding and go after grants or really rally the troops around it when you don't have a site, which we don't have either. So I think a good sort of robust roundtable on this is taking place, and it's still taking place with the Harvard Advisory Board here. And that's kind of what we're looking for. And I think I'm starting to talk in circles, so I'll stop before I get in trouble.
Thank you, Eric. So with that, and I, with Eric's recommendation here, the chairman of the ad-hoc committee is Ron. Do you want to summarize? Do you want to read? Do you want to make any comment on what you guys decided? Or your thoughts, Ron?
Well, in spite of Eric's suggestion that would read it into the record, that would take a few minutes. I'm happy to do that if that's what the board wants done.
No, I think a summarization, maybe?
We can summarize, because it is attached to the agenda packet. So it is posted on the city's website. Probably the key, and I'm extrapolating, and I would be happy to defer to the, to the other committee members who are here tonight, if they want to add some points. But I think the key points that the committee concluded is that the process should move forward. And it should focus on a marine facility that includes vessel haul-out capability, a working boatyard, and vessel storage that would be principally utilized by local vessels. The committee also feels strongly that, based upon its experience and its work over the last year, and it's been a year, that's not criticism, it's just a simple statement of fact. So there's been a lot of time spent, that the committee, ad-hoc committee, as well as the harbor director, who's been, as the city's liaison has been intimately involved in this as well, should be involved as participants in the formulation of a future feasibility analysis, which, as Mr. Ponorelli pointed out this evening, would be a next step following the market demand analysis. There is information indicating that funding for a future feasibility analysis that would have been coming, forthcoming from the cable liaison committee may no longer be available. And if that's the case, then the city might have to fund the next step itself, or reach out to some other source for assistance funding. Just give me a second, because I'm, there's several points here, and there's no, some of them are more specific, I think, than are useful right now. The committee recommends that enhanced demand data be pursued in future vessel owner-operator surveys that would support feasibility, financial feasibility analysis, and that such enhancements would, could include survey content, as well as survey distribution and follow-up to encourage survey response. And the last point that is in the report is that, on the presumption that funding for a facility would require either public financing and/or private financing, a thoroughly defensible financial feasibility analysis is going to be essential to pursuing such funding. The committee did not get involved in the site issue because the committee's focus was specifically... was specifically on the current demand, on the current market demand analysis.
Thank you, Ron. Any questions here for Ron? Gene?
Yes, if I remember right, on the first go-around with Lisa White Consulting Firm, they were talking about a fee of somewhere around $60,000 to do both market analysis, a feasibility study, and a site analysis. Am I correct? Somewhere around 60?
Yeah, I think that was right.
And so we went with half of that at this point right now, so we got the first part done. My question is, can we get the rest of it done for $30,000? I was unhappy with the report so far. I thought that it was a minimum job, and it just barely met the contract requirements, so I would like to see more done for the remaining fees. And how it's paid for, the city has to make a decision on that.
Thank you, Gene. Dana?
Yeah, there is some money set aside from the previous boat haul, boatyard and haulout facilities studies left over after RRM finished their work, and I think that's 50-plus. But besides that, kind of what we were looking at was the ad hoc committee, you know, being allowed to continue with the site location and that part of that criteria for the feasibility study, before the feasibility study is put together. And in the meantime, as timing would go, we're hoping that, and this has been mentioned to me by the CFO, the Morro Bay Commercial Fishermen Organizations, that they might be able, by that time, maybe they're re-up on some of their financial support, possibly. But nevertheless, that's our next step, is to move that way. And so we're looking to continue with that, and that would be, what I would be looking for, is a recommendation from the board, is to accept what we have and to continue on, as an ad hoc committee first, before we go into another paid consultant feasibility study.
I guess I see like three motions here. One, to accept the report as written with comments. Second would be to request Lisa White to submit a proposal to the city council for phase two, if you want to call it that, for feasibility and site analysis, with the comments that Ron has included. And then phase three, or, excuse me, the motion three would be to encourage the city council to contract with Lisa White contracting to do to phase two.
Thank you, Gene. One of the things that I have a recommendation, or at least a thought, before we even start this next phase, before we even allocate any money, there's a very limited amount of land available to do this. I think the ad hoc committee needs to meet with the city, whoever that may be, the city council, city manager, to find out the, you know, the triangle parking lot is the ideal thing. The city council has already made a decision not to do the lease in the South Deep here for the very idea that this might be where the haulout is. As I see it right now, given the political ramifications of what's happening north of the intake and all the land out of Coleman that's now sensitive habitat, which nothing can get done, this is probably our only option. And we need to get the commitment from the city that this is a viable option, that this is something that we can then go and do a feasibility study if we have a site. If we don't have a site, then, as I say, it's our rhetoric.
Thanks, Dana. Thanks, Bill. And one way to potentially get to those questions without putting together a bunch of series of meetings would be put it into the, into a motion, you know, recommend doing A, B, and C, and that the city, you know, quickly move forward on deciding what the heck they want to do with the triangle lot. You could just add it into that as a harbor advisory board recommendation.
Yeah, I agree with that, and I would, I think Gene's motion concepts, because he didn't make a motion, which is fine, were good, but the order, might want to shuffle the order and put the site number one, because clearly, if there's no site, as the chairman just said, it's rhetoric after that.
Do we, do we need a motion to accept the report as written with the comments?
Yeah, I personally don't, whatever the board chooses, I personally don't feel the need to do that. I think, you know, the analysis speaks for itself, and certainly public sentiment, citizen sentiments speaks for itself. So if this thing is going to get, going to get moved forward, I mean, as everyone has said, the public and the board has said, there are two things necessary. One is a site. In other words, the city has to commit to a site, which means the city council has to commit to a site, especially given the general plan work that's going on right now, because that could, that could roll right over the top of that and remove those opportunities. And number two, then, is to do whatever the precursor steps are necessary to pursue funding, financial feasibility analysis, whatever the precursors are.
You know, Gene, your comments, I think, are, you know, I don't want to poo-poo them, because I think through your comments regarding the feasibility study, it is done. Whether or not, you know, some of the data is good or bad, I mean, we can say it, and you did say it, and I value that comment, but I don't know if we really need to approve the feasibility study. It is what it is. I mean, it's, you know, I mean, I don't think we need to say, "We approve this." We need to say, "We have the demand analysis. This is what it states." The next step would be, if we feel that the citizens of Morro Bay and the harbor advisory board wants to move forward, we need to get a site.
I agree, we need to pick a site, and I would suggest that the ad hoc committee get together and make a recommendation.
Why wouldn't we make, why wouldn't we make a motion tonight that, relative to a, to the, remember, we work for the city council, so we make a motion tonight recommending to the city council that they, that they commit to a site, that the city, I don't want to personalize it, that the city commit to a site.
Any particular site or to a site?
I think it has to be, I think it has to be a site.
Yeah, this is an area that we have explored when Gene and I and, and, what's his name? Used to, it was a three-person ad hoc committee, Brett, Brett Cunningham, and we went through this. And what we've just finished doing as the ad hoc committee had nothing to do with the site. So I think we need some time to actually work on that, present it to you guys, then, and we're having a meeting here in a couple of weeks. And if we have a standing item on the agenda for a report, so if we can start getting something together, I mean, we can't just say that right now. I mean, we're, everybody's really happy and wants to get this going. We have information, but I think we need to sit down and talk about it and ask the city where, what is most feasible. I mean, I know what's most feasible, and then I know other people have what they think is most favorable, and they're not necessarily the same place. So we need to, we need to look, sit down and look at this, I think, a little bit more before we ask for them to say yes or no. What do you think?
I agree with that. I also, we talked a little bit in the committee about, and I personally feel that the committee members and a lot of other people, we have a pretty good idea of what we want now, and I think it would be a good time to figure out more closely what exactly that yard is going to look like. That's just my own, that's what I want to do as the next step, is to, is to tailor the ideal situation, which I think would include a yard with room to grow, start out small and leave room to develop. And I don't know what body should do that. I, I thought the ad hoc committee, it seemed like there was enough talent right there, possibly an expanded ad hoc committee, but I thought that would be another thing that would be good to do before the next analysis was done.
So what I'm hearing tonight is that we, as the harbor advisory board, really want to recommend, thank you very much, Henry, for your good work, and to move forward with the ad hoc committee, getting together a site analysis. Is that what I'm hearing? Eric? I'm sorry, you had something?
No, I don't want to stop your train of thought there, but...
So, I mean, I'm just trying to see where our next step is here. I mean, we've received public comment today. We have the report. I think the city knows from the citizens and from the report, the demand analysis or what it stated. So our next step is the, is, I would think, the site analysis, you know, an analysis of the available sites and what is the best favorable one or feasible one to go forward.
Now, can I jump in? Now, I will jump in. How about that? So I'm taking sort of what some proposed motions were and this different input, and maybe here's another alternative. If this is what I'm hearing, and given what you just said, perhaps the best way to move forward with a recommendation, with a vote of doing something is, assuming this is the direction the harbor advisory board wants to go, is recommend that the city move forward to next steps. We take this market analysis as a tool to move forward in those next steps, to inform those next steps, with site analysis being the primary number one. This is the thing we've got to really drill down on first, because that's going to inform how big this thing can be, which the market analysis will also feed into, because I'm, I'm not a boatyard builder, but hopefully Andy back there can, will nod his head north and south and not east and west. You've got a defined market, and let's say it's whatever, 269 boats or whatever the number is, that's going to drive how big your yard's going to be. You're not going to build a giant yard for more boats than you know what to do with, nor you're going to build a smaller yard to not be able to deal with. You're going to size it appropriately. So this feeds into that process. We need to determine where this thing may be and how much space it's going to take. Like I say, recommend moving forward with next steps. City move forward with next steps with site analysis and identification and commitment, you know, one way or another, to a location. Obviously, the triangle lot's number one. I wouldn't completely shut the door on this possibility of getting something at the north end of Dynegy's property, whether they're amenable to going there or not. It certainly would be worth asking them again and see if they'll open that door, see if that door's still slammed firmly shut. They've had on the market for, I don't know, six, eight months, didn't get anybody that they've found worthy to buy that property as entirety. It's certainly worth asking them again. So that may be a way to move forward, to kind of answer all the potential motions out there and keep these things moving forward. I would also say that the ad hoc committee, as Dana was saying, needs to be an important part of this site analysis process moving forward, in addition to informing the next steps study that, assuming we go there, we contract with. I would, from the comment we've heard from the board and the public and the ad hoc committee, it sounds to me like, if memory serves from LWC's originally, original proposal that we split into two, that second part may have grown, and it may require a change in their proposal and what, and it may entail a change from what we're asking them. I think the ad hoc committee should be an important part of that, in terms of, okay, what are we looking at for next steps? Let's take the, you know, if we go with LWC and that proposal, start with that as a starting point, and then see what else we want to include in those next steps, and then we're going to have to bring that forward and, I'm assuming, get a new quote, because I think the scope is going to have changed from what was originally envisioned. Maybe not. I don't have that second part in front of me, so I can't speak to it, but that's just my feeling on where it would be.
Thank you, Eric. So is that a motion?
No.
You're supposed to make the motions.
Gene?
No.
Alan?
After our experience with splitting the demand analysis off, I, I would hate to see us split the site analysis off from the financial feasibility, just for reasons of time. I think that that should be together, if at all possible, so that doesn't drag on another year.
But the thing is, is that we can't determine the feasibility unless we have a site, and that would be the first thing, you know, we have to, we have to analyze what are those sites that we have.
My, I think that we should postpone, not postpone, but we should start the site analysis and the financial feasibility after we have a site.
Oh, yeah.
Definitely, yeah. I agree.
Lynn?
I move that the ad hoc committee proceed as rapidly as possible. I move that the ad hoc committee proceed as rapidly as possible with the site analysis.
Okay, Dana, do you have any questions? Or is that, this a motion, Lynn? Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and we have a second on having the ad hoc committee move forward as fast as possible to develop a site selection for the boat haulout facility, storage, and is there any discussion on this?
Yes. Dana, myself, and Brett already went through this once before. We came up with three alternatives. I don't know what you're going to gain on this particular round, but maybe things have changed. Hopefully, my personal opinion is that the northern part of Enbarcadero, behind the Dynegy gates, would be the preferred site, but that'll have to be resolved later.
Alan, do you have any comments?
Well, I'd like to ask Ron if he thinks that the ad hoc committee is capable of doing what Lynn mentioned, motioned.
I don't think the ad hoc committee is qualified to execute, quote, "site analysis," unquote, for a Morro Bay boatyard and haulout facility. What it is, I think, qualified to do is to establish the criteria, which would shape a potential site. Ultimately, this body or any other body can talk about all sorts of sites, but I keep coming back to the city, capital C, in its general plan process, will determine if, in fact, there is a site, and if so, where it or they would be.
Dana?
Yeah, I, the reason I don't want to support your motion, Lynn, is because I do want to see us work on criteria the same. I was thinking of more of a motion to have a couple things in it. First of all, that we accept the report and that the city move forward with the process by allowing the ad hoc committee to continue to develop the criteria for the site to be used in the feasibility study. So I agree with Ron in the fact that we can get together and we can work on this, the ad hoc committee, but I think we wanted, and I think that's what we want to do, very much so. I believe that's a good way to go about it, and then give that information to be used in, whether we do a, I mean, there's all kinds of possibilities here, you know, it's just the hiring of services in different forms, you know, as far as graphics and other things that we may not be astute at to make that type of report. So that's how I feel. I would like to...
So, but we still have a motion, and we have a second. So is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I would like to ask for a raise of hands of all in favor of Lynn's motion. Could you repeat the motion, Paulie?
Move for the ad hoc committee to proceed as rapidly as possible with developing site analysis on the boatyard haulout storage facility, seconded by Jane. site analysis on the boatyard haul-out storage facility, seconded by Gene.
Okay. Lynn?
The intent of my motion is to have the ad hoc committee proceed with the process, making the recommendations, discussing the sites, and then making a recommendation to the city council on what we would like to see. Perhaps that's more clearly stating, rather than site analysis.
Lynn, if you were willing to modify your motion, which you have the right to do, to substitute criteria, site criteria for site analysis, I'd love to vote for it.
Okay. To develop site criteria.
I'll agree.
So the amendment?
amended.
Could you read the amendment, Paulie, so that everyone understands it?
Ad hoc committee proceed as rapidly as possible with developing a site criteria on a boatyard haul-out storage facility.
Okay, so we have a new motion that was amended by Lynn, seconded by Gene. All in favor, raise their hands.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? I hear none here, so that passes unanimously. So that's what we'd like to do. And that is our next step. But I do agree that without a site, or at least potential sites, if we could have more than one, that would be great. I don't know the feasibility, but that will be determined, and then we can move forward. If we can't find a site, if the city's not willing to help us with a site, and that's the only sites available, then, as I say, it's all rhetoric. And that's why we need your support, public, to talk to your city councilmen, to talk to people that might have some influence on helping us. I don't know if this is good protocol, but is there any way that maybe some people who have some expertise or some help can get a hold of the ad hoc committee? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, that's an internal process. I don't think it's...
All right. Well, I do apologize, Ron.
But I can assure the board that the committee will consider the addition, some additional membership if they have particular expertise. And we will pursue that. The committee will take that responsibility.
And I do apologize, as I don't have the right protocol, probably. So I do apologize, Ron. Okay.
So can I, I'm going to ask for some clarification on ad hoc committees' charge to develop site criteria. Would the end result of said site criteria mean the yard is going to be 10-foot by 20-foot and blue in color and 40 feet tall? Is that the sort of criteria we're looking for? Are we looking for...
I think site location is first, and, you know, part of that we'll be looking at as, yeah, looking at the size of it and, you know, because of the needs that we see from this study and that we're hearing from the public.
Thank you.
It might be a little more general than that, but, you know, driven, as you said, Eric, you yourself said it'll be partially defined by the demand analysis.
So what I, so taking that site criteria findings forward, let's say it looks like this and it's 58 pages long, that is what we're going to use to take to the city council and say, "Okay, let's get commitment for a site, for a physical location." Are we already doing that with this ad hoc committee effort?
Well, the ad hoc committee works for the board. The board works for the council. So the process is going to be that the ad hoc committee will establish, to the best of its ability, will establish criteria for a boatyard and haul-out facility site, will bring it to the board for the board's determination, and then the board will make, will or will not take some action relative to a recommendation to the city council.
Correct. I'm just trying to clarify exactly what we're asking the committee to do and where we're going with it. Thank you.
Gene, do you have a question?
I was just curious whether, in the wisdom of the ad hoc committee and this analysis, if they should say, "Well, you know what, maybe this is beyond our expertise. Maybe we want to hire a consultant." That may be an option.
Point very well taken. We need to be really clear about what we don't know.
Any other comments, any other topics that need to be discussed tonight, ladies and gentlemen?
I would just like to thank the public once again, the boating community, the commercial fishermen, the recreational boaters for coming out. This is, this is really good. This is the time where we need our support. It's going to be a long haul, so we hope you continue to come and support this.
And I'll ditto that. And Henry, thank you very much for your report. And let's get on to the next steps. So I want to call this meeting to order, I mean, to, do I hear a motion to call this meeting to order?
I move...
Do I hear a second?
You mean adjourn?
Adjourn.
You already called the order.
A first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.